Rest in peace.
You're welcome.
Rest in peace.
You gotta shake it.
It's not a salt shaker. Hello? Hello?
Hello. Hello.
Okay. Okay, let's call the meeting to order. Uh, Alicia. James.
Here.
Matt.
Here.
Chris.
Here.
And myself. Okay, let's stand for the flesh. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the meeting of the Rochelle School Board in public for the purpose of conducting the school district business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment as indicated on the agenda. Notice of this public meeting was given as required by Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight four, one through four, for being posted at the Community First Bank, Rochelle Public Library, Rochelle Post Office, Rochelle District Office, Rochelle School Website, and with W D U X, W S B T, and W S A W. Consider approval of agenda additions and revisions. That was you, James?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alicia. Okay. We have a motion made and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye. Aye. There was a pause? Any abstentions? Okay, motion was carried. Public comment. Do we have any?
There's nobody signed up. However, we did not announce and we're in a different environment, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We did announce that somebody should sign up if they wanted to speak, so maybe ask if anybody wants to speak.
Does anybody want to speak? I'm sorry. I know you really wanna come up here and use this microphone, don't you? Nobody? Okay. We'll move on then. I apologize for not doing that. Okay, communication. District administrative report.
I just have a couple of things. Um, the first one is compensation model update. This last Monday, we were supposed to have our, our first meeting of the final phase of the compensation model revision, but we had a snow day, um, ice day, whatever you wanna call it, weird weather day, and it sounds like we might have some fun this weekend. Um, so anyway, that was postponed until this upcoming, um, this upcoming Monday. And just so the board knows, it's really a four-phase process. Uh, the first phase was to, uh, meet with staff and conduct a SWOT analysis, so strengths and weaknesses of our current model, opportunities and threats with any new model or revision. And then we took all those concerns and all those things and moved into phase two, which is really to decide what are the core values to our staff and what are they looking for when it comes to compensation. The third step was to then take those core concepts, review other districts' compensation models, and identify pieces of those models or language or strategies or, um, organizations like verbiage. What, how does that look? What does it sound like? What do we like about other models? What don't we like about other models from different districts? The fourth phase is now coming together, reviewing all the first three phases, and identifying the critical components that we believe as a staff and as an organization are must haves in our compensation model, and then work through the wording, like, you know, I think of professional development, you know, do we do that as a points or do we do that in events? How does that happen? Salary schedule, what does that look like? Is that a ten-year schedule? Is that a twenty-year schedule? Is there no schedule? And that's the next part of the process. So I just want to keep the board informed that we're still working through that, and, uh, the ultimate goal is to have a recommendation to the board, maybe by April meeting. Um, maybe not. It all depends on if we have no more snow days. Um, just another update about health insurance. Uh, normally, this would be the month that we'd be sharing with the board health insurance, um, bids or increases. We currently are operating with the Spirus, uh, Health Network, and this is our second full year with them. Last year, we had a not to exceed eight, and we came in at like seven point eight, nine percent increase, something like that. Um, and this year, we have a not to exceed twelve. In January, February timeframe, our numbers looked pretty good as consortium. They came back to us in early March and said, "Numbers have changed, and so we're going to hold steady at the twelve percent increase." At which point, the consortium said, "Well, we're gonna go to bid." And so we're in that process right now. I have a meeting next Tuesday to get the initial feedback from the bids. Um, I announced that to our staff yesterday because any time that we will potentially, uh, change to a different health care, insurance carrier, that's a bit of a process because the big questions are, can I still go to my doctor? Are my medicines still covered? And if not, if they are, i- is it at the same rate? Is it not at the same rate? Um, do I have to travel further for speci- specific services? Um, and so we're gonna take all that into consideration. And again, we are part of an insurance consortium. It's the same as our special ed consortium, which includes Abbotsford, Spencer, Edgar, Marathon, um, Athens, and Rochelle. So the superintendents of that district, uh, of those districts are meeting on Tuesday to find out the initial bid review. So that's that. Um, and then I don't have it on here, but as we were talking, the biennial budget, my understanding from sources in Madison, because I also like the WASDA organization, we have the WASDA organization. Um, WASDA and WSB are, are both concerned that we may not have a biennial budget until late in the year, which means that our board might be setting our levy in October without a concrete budget for the next two years. And that's a bit of a concern because, again, we're, we're making our best guess, but we wouldn't, we would not have concrete numbers. And that's, um, that's never fun. Because obviously, we'd be setting a levy with, with non-specific information. So we hope that doesn't happen, but it, it looks like right now it's trending in that direction, so that's just something to keep our eyes on. And barring any questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, please? Okay. Elementary school report. Mrs. Klein.
Hello. Um, summer school is well on its way. We've got teachers secured for little people. Um, we've got Ms. Yenter, Mrs. Akwig, Mrs. McDonald, and Mrs. Patton doing session one. And then session two, we have Ms. Tiel, um, Ms. Arbiju, Mrs. McDonald again, and then Ms. Ashworth. Um, Mr. Gagas is doing try rosette again. Ms. Kavleski is doing band lessons again. Uh, currently, we pushed out the enrollment registration, and right now, we've got thirty-five kids, which doesn't scare me because we tend to be late registers here. Um, usually when May rolls around and people are really starting to think about what summer looks like, that's when we see a lot of people come in. Um, so I don't anticipate us to have very different numbers. I anticipate about eight kids for, for summer school again. Um, and then our spring conferences, we had ninety-two percent, uh, participation in conferences in Little People Land this year, so, um, was a little lower. Not quite sure what the cause of that was. Um, we're normally about ninety-five percent for spring conferences, so it was a little bit lower than ninety-two. Um, there were a few parents who did a phone conference instead, like, something was happening. They, they couldn't come in, but the teachers called during their time and, um, so that might be something we move towards for spring conferences in the future. Otherwise, we're trucking along. We started our forward exam for grades three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and ten. Uh, tenth graders are done with their portion of the forward exam. Eighth graders started. Uh, all of little people have started so far, and then next Tuesday, uh, the big day is seventh and eighth grade, as well as pre-ACT secure and ACT are all coming up. So April first is a big day for testing in our schools. So don't have your kid pulled out that day. Please, please, it's a big day for us. Otherwise, yeah, we're trucking along in Little People Land. Any questions?
Anybody? Little People Land. I love Little People Land. Okay, second day.
So in the middle school, high school, we've, uh, first wanna recognize a few individuals who had some success over our winter season. Um, in wrestling, Magnus Hillgris qualified for state. Um, he's a senior. Uh, Carter Stetz and Brayden Bonney, um, a freshman and a, a senior qualified for sectionals. For girls' basketball, Addison Gagas, second team all-conference, and Lea Kazeski was honorable mention. For boys' basketball, Dylan Deleit was honorable mention. A couple of field trips that I wanna share with you guys are gonna be actual items later on the agenda. The first two are through student council. The first one is their middle school, end-of-the-year school trip. They're headed to Wisconsin Dells this year. The second one is, uh, middle school, high school student council. Uh, last year, they went to a, a weather day. This year, we're going to history day. And it's really neat what the brewers do for this trip is they, first of all, give us discounted tickets for students that go. There's a lot of neighboring school districts that go. Um, they give them a free hot dog. They give them a free soda. Um, last year, they had demonstrations on at home plate about, here's what a cloud does or whatever, and all of a sudden, there's a big explosion at home plate. Um, this year, for history, we've got history of our state and history of Milwaukee booths that are all over the place. Um, both of these trips being put on by student council are actually funded by the, um, the funds that they've raised over the, the course of their, their year. Um, so it comes out of their activity fees. So I don't know if you guys have any questions on either one of those trips, but ultimately, uh, there'll be actual items later. The next one, I'm actually gonna pass it over to Ms. Zizinski and let her explain this next one. So High School Play Sixty, um, is actually a program, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Zizinski, but you've kind of started this program here, right? And it's a, it's a really unique opportunity for kids to just get active. Um, I don't know if you remember, but, uh, last year, we were actually picked as the, the school in the entire United States to, uh, to receive funds, um, through their program. And, uh, this trip as well is fully funded through the, uh, High School Play Sixty. So let you kind of explain this a little.
Yeah, that's fine. So they gave us the opportunity to volunteer at Lambeau, um, for an actual game. There were some of us that went, and now for the draft, we have the opportunity, not day one, but day two, which is still pretty cool, to go. Um, the only thing on this form would be that the times did switch. So instead of it being like an all-day thing, like, um, leaving at ten AM and getting back at almost midnight, now it would be like leave at eight AM, get, leave, um, Green Bay around three to four. Um, so this, we don't know what we're doing yet, because they said the NFL actually has to tell them what they are doing, so they're waiting for them, which is kind of weird. It's a month away now and they still don't know. But anyways, throwing us at some sort of booth, a stand, where we get to represent Rochelle, um, kind of for winning that state and national thing last year. But, yeah, that's all that is.
And then next, I'd like to pass it over to Ms. Yenter. Um, she's gonna share with us how our students did in Marion for solo ensemble. It was early March on a Saturday. Um, I did share with you guys the, the colored packets, that, uh, the information up here, just so that way, if you've got a, a weird angle. But I'll let you kind of explain the success of our students comparing them to some of the, the local schools.
Sure. So, um, I registered a hundred and one events, uh, for vocal in some of our vocal classes, uh, which is an all record, I think. I think, uh, back in the day, if we started, we were doing like, um, forty or so events. And between, you know, just kids just wanna participate, so we are, we're up to a hundred and one, uh, despite the year across. Um, ninety-three, like, of those were vocal. Of our nine, three events, I think, oh, four, we were like, or no, sorry. Fifty were state qualifying, um, that puts qualify for state, and thirty-nine of those actually qualified for state. We had a comparison compared to, you know, Amherst or Iola, and obviously, we're taking the most events to state. We have the most events, most participation. Um, middle school too, right, we kind of, Amherst's pretty comparable, but we, uh, we definitely aren't up to there. Um, chart kind of showing you, so the, the bar graph right there is, uh, um, those are the events we are taking to state compared to our, those kids. And some of the kids who really excelled, um, like Daniel, he, he took ten events, which is the max, the limit, and nine of them are going to state, so he was, he called for ten. That nine, those, they were pretty far with us. That's a lot. Like, in a concert, right, you compare four songs, five songs, right? These kids, in addition to nine, were working for a concert. They prepared like nine, right? On their own, with me, right, whatever, but that is a lot of music to prepare, uh, to prepare well, um, in order to get high scores. So you can see there are two. Um, I will say that we had, uh, a one judge, uh, she's like two, she pulled me right at the end of the day. And I said, "I was playing piano all day." We had that, our night playing piano all day, Jennifer, um, Reese, and, uh, Renee Aaron. They all, we all played piano for our, our ninety-three vocal events. And, um, she pulled me aside. She's like, "I caught one of the other people from Rochelle, one of the other adults." She goes, "But I wanted to make sure I talked to you." She said, um, "You know, not everybody, right, is going to grow up to be, uh, opera singers or professional, uh, professional singer," she said. "Even the kids who, right, maybe they're just starting, maybe it's the first time." She said, "Everybody was," she noticed all day. As soon as a Rochelle person got in front of her, she's like, "They were prepared. They knew how to be on stage. They knew what to say. They knew how to act. They knew how to go." So she's like, "I just," she's like Rochelle in general, all day today. She's like Rochelle just impressed me. She goes, "Your kids were really good." So that was, that was probably the biggest compliment I got. Okay, so, anyway, yay Rochelle.
Okay. That, that is very clever. Thank you.
And then the last thing that I wanna share with you folks is an update for our conferences, for spring parent-teacher conferences. Um, what you're gonna see up there, the first number is overall, this year, we had thirty-two percent of our parents, the middle school and high school level show up. It's an increase from last year. Last year was a thirty-one percent. At the, the high school, we had a, a large jump. We had a little bit of a dip in the middle school. But when we think about these numbers, first of all, I just wanna, um, let you guys know that I really do think that our, our students do a really good job communicating with their, with their teachers, with their parents. I think our teachers do a good job communicating with parents. I think parents do a good job reaching out. And so if you have questions, comments, concerns, I do feel like parents, the middle school, high school level, that they do reach out to those teachers. Uh, but this is just another opportunity for us to, to catch some of those kids. We were a little nervous this year because we actually scheduled parent-teacher conferences on the same day as a high school basketball game and a middle school basketball game. And we were nervous what that would do to our numbers, but it actually ballooned our numbers for that second day. I know I was talking to a few teachers that said that they had parent-teacher conferences running from four to seven-thirty, and it was literally non-stop. We did have a few parents say it was nice that we were serving popcorn and soda for parent-teacher conferences too. So that was a huge win. But ultimately, um, we've already scheduled them for next year, and we, we purposely stayed away from those nights. Now, we found out afterwards that maybe those nights are some pretty good nights to have conferences. The more people we can get in the building, it's a little noisy. You've got basketballs bouncing, but I think parents and, and kids showing up to conferences. Another teacher shared how many kids actually showed up with their parents to their conference, which I think is a huge win too. So, um, we're having discussions as a staff right now about what conferences look like and possibly changing them, um, for next year. But ultimately, we're kind of in the, the early stages of that. But we found out that maybe it's not so bad to have a basketball game or two going on when we have conferences, so. Um, but that's it for, for my report. Unless you have any questions, I appreciate, um, Jenna and Lisa for, for presenting as well.
Yes, thank you, ladies. Anybody have any questions? No? Okay. Well, let's keep moving on. Consent agenda.
So on the consent agenda, we, uh, have no new hires at this point, so no contracts. We do have our first reservation leading into the end of the, uh, school year. Uh, this is our base teacher, our family consumer science teacher. Um, we also have the three, uh, field trips that we have just heard about. Uh, gifts and requests, we do have a baseball donation of just over five thousand dollars. That's for, um, home and away baseball jerseys. Now, I did receive a question about this because what does the school supply, correct? And I s- I've always answered, "The school will supply everything that's needed to run and operate a sports team." However, what I found out is that typically, in baseball, we have not purchased jerseys. Because, um, back in the day, um, Jack evidently, I, and I, I never met him. I wish I would've. But Jack wanted to have names on the jersey. So at that point, they would fundraise and they would purchase jerseys. So whenever you see the question like, "Of course we'd buy jersey," no, we haven't since Jack took over. How many ever, you know, decades ago that was? Um, and now that Jack's no, no longer our coach and no longer with us, um, it, that question came up. So, um, for this year, they're buying, there was a donation to buy home and away jerseys. We still provide the pants for them. We provide all the equipment, bats and balls and catcher bits and catcher's equipment, that type of thing. Um, but that's what that donation is, to, to keep that going. Now, that also kind of adjusts our, we currently have a, a cycle for our uniforms, and so we're gonna have to communicate with said, uh, baseball coaches to see if that's something that is gonna be replicated every year? Is that something that we buy them now and then next year, we have to have standard no-name jerseys? Like, how often does this happen? Um, but for this year, uh, over the threshold for, uh, board approval, so that's what that baseball donation is. And then we have the regular board meeting minutes from the February seventeenth board meeting.
Okay, is maybe any questions about either the field trips or anything? Okay, then I need a motion to approve the consenting agenda. Okay, Matt, is there a second?
I'll second.
Chris? Okay. There's been a motion made in second to approve the consented agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There was a pause? Any abstentions? Okay, motion was carried. Approval of bills with financial statements. Dennis, did you get any questions from anybody?
I did receive one. Uh, there was a, I, I don't remember the, the check number, but it was basically, um, uh, a, a payment for the elevator because we've had ongoing issues with this elevator here in the auditorium. Um, what has happened in the past is that we, we tend to haul some equipment down from the band room. Um, it could be projectors, it could be instruments. And then when we're in there, sometimes as the door's opening or as it's closing, we, we're trying to get that instrument in or the case in, and we'll knock that door, and it knocks it slightly off track. Well, then it gets stuck, um, and, and that's not always good. There's also some times where we're in the elevator. It seems we were working just fine, and we're halfway up and it, it blows the fuse or blows the breaker, and we don't know why that is. We've had Otis Elevator Service, uh, Provider come in, and they're like, "Well, if you guys would buy this, basically a reader, we could test the system so much better." And we're like, "You're Otis Elevator Company. You don't have the reader?" "Well, no, because there's so many different elevators out there. We just have the, our clients buy them." Which is kind of weird because it's like a five, six thousand dollar purchase, but I guess, I don't know how many different variations of elevators there are. It's not my business. I don't know. Um, so maybe that is a thing. But when the gentleman comes out to service it, he goes through the different troubleshoots and gets it to the point where it's working most of the time. It keeps throwing that breaker. We're not sure why. Um, periodically, right now, I think there was a week and a half ago, we got stuck, um, in there because it blew the breaker or, or some reason, but it's been working, um, for the most part since then, um, or since we've had the, the guy in, uh, the last time to fix it. So the, the, the check that was there was for the annual service, the annual inspection, those types of things. But there has been ongoing complaints with that elevator. Uh, there is a company out of Illinois that has the reader that could potentially come up and, and read the, the electronics of the elevator. Um, that's gonna be our next step if for some reason this doesn't hold. So it's probably going to happen, and the, the only reason we don't like to do that is because obviously, it's a longer travel. It's a more expensive bill. Uh, but if that's what we need to do, that's what we're gonna have to do with that elevator, because it's, it's just an ongoing issue.
Is there any eleva- is there any other school that has the same elevator that we could borrow their reader?
Well, that's a great point, because I think Stevens Point has the reader. And I, last time I talked with, uh, Mr. Richter, he was going to reach out and, and try to figure out if that's something we could borrow to have them, you know, at the next service to see if it was gonna be the same match. Because if we can borrow it or rent it for the day.
Rent it, yeah, instead of buying it for.
Correct. So we should talk about this, because is it the motor that's tripping the breaker? Is it like a big breaker?
We'd have to talk to Tom. I'm not sure.
Because we have energy logger.
If, if that's what it is, yeah, we could install something to periodically check, to check it whenever.
Well, you put it on there and let's use the heck out of it and make it happen. This way, it would read it.
Yeah, absolutely. We can try that.
What did you say again? Did you want to say?
It, yeah, energy logger. We put, we installed that.
Oh, okay.
Just, so, yeah, it just monitors everything.
To see if it's putting a surge out there to break.
Correct.
Where it's doing it at certain times.
What is exactly causing that or at what times?
Has, has students gotten caught in the elevator or is it just equipment that gets caught in?
I know in the past, there's been students recently, I, we had a staff member a week and a half ago. I have not heard of students getting, um, caught in there this year. I know that was happening last year quite a bit.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any other questions regarding the bills?
If that was the only question I had on any, any, uh, checks or, helps people.
Okay, well, then I need a motion to approve the bills with financial statements. Okay, James, is there a second?
I'll second.
Matt, a seconded? Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded by Matt to approve the bills with financial statements. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There was a pause? Abstentions? Okay, motion's carried. All right, old business. Consider policy updates second reading.
So again, these policy updates are, uh, a Niola recommendation based on the finances of school districts because there was an update, um, in, in the financial world. Now, they are recommending a new policy for us, uh, that is seventy-four fifty property inventory. And, um, before we had the first reading, uh, Rachel and I were able to, to talk, and basically, um, the verbiage in there says that we would, we would produce a property, uh, inventory, um, every time that we would be going to renewal, because, and that only makes sense because if we're going to renew our property insurance, they need to know what we have anyway. But it's not going to be an ongoing, so it doesn't mean that all of a sudden, you know, our tech department has branded computers and we immediately put those into register. That would make sense, but it's not gonna be a, a continuous thing. It'd be where we would go and do inventory of all of our equipment for that renewal process. And so that's that new, uh, that new property inventory policy. Uh, this is second reading, so if we need to go through any that are, uh, that are in question for verbiage or language, we can do so. Otherwise, we would recommend approving the, uh, policies as presented.
Okay. Did anybody else who went through them have any questions? How many of them or any verbiage? Okay, if that's where we're at, I would need a motion to approve the policy updates as presented.
I'll motion.
Okay, Alicia, do you have a second?
Seconded.
James, okay, I have a motion and second to approve policy updates as presented. All those in favor say aye. There was a pause? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion is carried. New business. Consider W I S N P Co-op sixty-six point zero three zero one agreement.
So basically, what we have here is Wisconsin School Nutrition Purchasing Cooperative. Um, it is a sixty-six oh three agreement, meaning that we would pay another school district for these services. And what it does is it, and I, I talked with Teresa. She's super excited about it. It's a profi- it's, first of all, it's a professional network for her to communicate with, ask questions. Um, and, and they're very responsive. Second of all, it provides us with kind of a, arguably, a, a Sam's Club approach purchasing. So you have this consortium of schools that purchase, um, purchase food for their, their food service program. And the neat, unique thing about the cooperative is that if, if we purchase too much or not enough and we need to share between the school districts, we can do so. And that's, that becomes a little bit easier, and because you're buying in, in larger quantities, obviously, it's a cheaper price. So, um, the recommendation would be to approve this cooperative, um, just because it provides us with another option for our food service that maybe we could get a little bit higher quality, uh, meals, a higher quality ingredients, uh, at a cheaper price. So it seems right now that, that our food service director's super excited about it, and it increases our buying power. And it's very flexible that we can exchange and move things around. So, um, it seems to be a, a pretty good thing. So this would be, you know, the first year of it, and, um, we could evaluate it and see if it's something you wanna continue to participate in.
Is it going to cost us anything, Dennis?
Um, membership dues are three hundred dollars per district, and then obviously, the, when we purchase the, the goods, right?
Right.
The ingredients and the food.
Okay.
And now, from what I understand from, um, And now, from what I understand from um Teresa is that the items that are available here, along with, uh, in comparison to our other providers, they're cheaper. So we're gonna make that back very quickly.
All right. All right, does anybody have any questions about that? Okay, then I need a motion to approve the W I S N S N P Co-op sixty-six point three oh one agreement as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Chris, okay. I will second it. Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the agreement sixty-six point three oh one agreement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion is carried. Okay, consider early college credit program requests, Mr. Colton. Did you need my mic?
No, I, I'm, I'm gonna get closer though, can you guys hear me?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
You couldn't hear me, but I.
Uh, so this year, uh, for the summer E C C P, we got four students that uh, that applied. Doesn't necessarily mean that they, they will be like following through it. Um, but let's say all four of those kids took three classes. Um, that would come out to be about, uh, sorry, let's turn on over here. Five thousand four hundred dollars. We get about fifty percent of that money back from the state. So really they come out to be twenty-seven hundred dollars that we pay if they take three classes. Um, chances are they're not gonna be taking all three, or all four of them taking three classes. Um, then we move to the fall E C C P. Um, so you don't see Start College Now there in the summer because Start College Now, they don't offer classes during the summer. Um, so they'll be in the fall and the spring. So with the fall E C C P, four students again. Um, sorry, not four students. Three students here. I think I messed something up here on your, on the packet here. It's only two students really, so it'd be coming out if those two students took uh three classes, come out to be twenty-seven hundred dollars. Um, we received fifty percent of that back, so really one thousand three hundred fifty dollars. Um, then we go to the Start College Now. We have three students or two, three students there, my bad. Um, we pay the total cost of Start College Now. Um, so if every student took two courses, that would be about three thousand dollars. Any questions on those?
And just to refresh the course memory, uh, we had a discussion probably a year or two ago about the types of classes students could take. And a- at that point, we said, well, let's say that um, you know, we have, we offered Intro to Psychology class, but they wanna take Intro to Psych- to Psychology. Well, as long as they take it here first, and then if they wanna take, because they get up to a certain amount, eighteen?
Eighteen credits.
Up to eighteen credits that they can take for college credit. And if our class is not a dual credit, where they would receive, you know, take it once and receive college and high school credit for it. If they wanna take it in college and get college credit and get a, a jump start by taking ours first, it's not necessarily impeding our staff or reducing our staff. And they've already got the experience, they're probably gonna do quite well, that scores a good grade for them in the college program. They can take any classes up to eighteen credits. So at that time, the board, the only uh, the only reservation we had is that um, if we have a similar class offer, they must take our class first. And if it's dual credit, obviously they get dual credit. If it's not dual credit, then they could take that same class in college or tech and, and receive the college credit, but they have to take ours first. So it was kind of our, 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 our ruling at the time.
And, and that uh, let's say they took our, our class first, then they took the college class, that college class would not reflect on our transcripts. Our course would reflect on our transcripts, so. And the rule is, is that we have to pay um by sta- state mandate that we have to pay up to eighteen credits of our students. E C C P Star College.
Can I just make a comment for something that stems from all of this? Because we have so many kids that are doing this and doing like the dual credits. And you know, there are so many kids that are go- starting college with all of these college credits. My daughter being one of those from a year ago. Um, but one thing that we should look at with this is scholarships. Because all the scholarships, most of them, you have to go full time. Well, somebody who is going into any kind of healthcare career, a lot of these colleges, they're coming in with so many credits. There's no way they're going full time. You, you can only take class, you know, you have to take anatomy and then advanced anatomy and then micro, there's no way you're doing full time. So like Emma lost all of her scholarships because she wasn't going full time. Because she had so many classes already. So it's just sad that these kids are, are losing out on those, um, because they worked so hard previously.
Before.
Yeah.
And, and that was brought to my attention earlier this year.
Yeah.
So like, when I talk to these students, I tell them, if you get enough credits, you're probably losing. But, and I, I guess I say like incoming freshman scholarships, cuz you're not an incoming freshman. Um, and that does, that does kinda suck.
Yeah.
And I, I hope that at the end of the day, like if they get a lot of credits through E C C P and Start College Now, that it can balance out and maybe the time is saved, you know? Um, but yeah, I guess it's, it is, it's independent on those students. If, if they take one class or first they take, you know, three classes, four classes.
Yeah, I just wish that wasn't like, why do they have to go full time? Like so many kids now are working and going to school, like I feel like that should be just looked at, like.
And was that written into the scholarship? So maybe that's something that I can talk with um, uh, our scholarship committee. And see if we could talk with the providers of the scholarship to maybe adjust that. Because on, on the, on the other end of the spectrum, my middle daughter, who's now uh graduated, she had a number of credits uh again from, from high school. And then she took one winter run and she finished her college in three years as a business H R person. Which saving one year of out of state tuition for us was, was great, you know, that was, that was good. But then again, um, her sequence wasn't maybe messed up or similar to the, to that healthcare sequence. So she was able to maintain full time status. Yeah, but I, I think that, that's a great, a great comment. I'll talk with our scholarship committee to see if we can adjust that maybe.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were talking about our, our foundation. I thought you were talking about like other scholarships that maybe she had gotten upset.
And, and that is the case too. But you know, like, if, I guess if we would have like preemptively thought about that, like I would have wished that the scholarship, give it to somebody else then. Because um, it's essentially a waste, you know? But yeah, it's the same thing with that. So I'm glad that you're talking to them about that so that they understand that. This is still a way better option.
Okay, okay, okay. First of all, I wanna talk to students about this.
So you like this option, but just be aware, that people need to be aware, parents probably. And you're talking to the student, does that information get all the way home? You never know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, um, anything else, Colton?
I think I'm up next, right? For the E three?
E three.
E, oh, we are? Okay.
And just like a minute.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we, um, so we have two different things, right? So we do need a um board action on each one.
Okay.
Early college credit program would be one.
Yeah.
Uh, one motion and approval, and then the Start College Now would be a separate motion and approval.
All right, so first let's go with the early college credit program. I need a motion to approve those requests as presented.
I'll motion.
Okay, Alyssa, is there a second?
I'll second.
Chris will second it. Okay, all those in favor to approve the E C C P request as presented, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion is carried. Okay, now we need to consider the Start College Now request. And do I have a motion for that? James, okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Matt will second it. Okay, there's been a motion made and second to approve the S C N request as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, having none, that motion is carried. Okay, consider Ad for Employment E four E. Is that Mr. Colton again?
Yeah, that's me. Mr. Colton again.
Yeah.
I, yeah, okay.
So, hey, no, it's all good. You can call me whatever you want. Um, so this is something that we have to do every year, um, according to D P I, something that you guys have to approve of. Um, that's basically what this first page is um kinda going off of, so if you can go to the next one. Um, if you click on that Portage County link, that's just some stats about Portage County, um, and where we're seeing like a lot of our, our jobs. Um, just some, some quick stats. Um, and these are kind of areas where like our C T E kind of fit in. So it's kinda, it shows like how many um, people in our, our county are going through this and why it's important for our schools to be kind of um teaching our students things about this, you know? So keep it back out of this. This is uh our career pathways. And if you, we're not gonna go through all of them, but if you click on that link, it, it shows the career pathways for the agriculture, business, hospitality, tourism, manufacturing. So those are, yeah, those are our C T E programs there, but really it encompasses everyone. So English, science, social studies, like everyone has a, a part in these pathways for our students. We can move on. So, no, you're good, you're good. So um, these are different activities that uh our school does, elementary through middle school. Elementary, just to name a few, we have the employee employer tours, uh, Food for America, career related field trips. Uh, middle school, we do a few things, like athletic clubs, a career and technical education student organizations. High school, that's where we're gonna see a bulk of it, we do youth friendship, we have a career fair. Um, and then I think we have, well, like senior exit interviews, which I think we're, we're, we're starting on, on Tuesday here with them. So there's just a few. These are all our partnerships that we've had in the past, we're always looking to grow this. But we've worked with all of these different um organizations and employers um to help us out. Really, um, this list would be way bigger if we put on everyone that uh came to our career fair. Um, but yeah, these are, are ones that we work with a lot, so we're lucky to have them. Zello, Zello is a big part in our A C P plan. Um, that is also state mandated that uh our schools use that. Um, but what they do on this program, um, I think it's pretty helpful. It used to be career cruising when I was in high school and it moved on to, to Zello here. I don't know what it was when you guys were, were in high school or you guys had that, you know? Um.
What?
But this is. But Zello, Zello has provided, um, in grades six, six through eight. And there's a, there's a lot of cool things that you can do on that. So if you ever get the chance, you should go on your kid's uh Chromebook and check it out, maybe see what um you wanna do the rest of your life, you know? So. Um, so these are some of our, these are, these are our plans for twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, some of these things we are doing, some of the things that we want to improve on. Um, so uh, Mr. Larson, he talked about, a little bit about a goal, you know, not necessarily going to happen right now, we're still working on it and stuff like that. But having um student led conferences during um, our con- our conferences. Uh, to have some more parent engagement and then they get the chance to hear their kids say, well, this is what I wanna do and this is how I'm doing and this is why I wanna do it. Um, because, I mean, really, parents are the front runners of their, their kid's life, right? So we're just along for the journey on that. Uh, financial aid nights, things changed this year with financial aid, really like last year, so there wasn't one. But next year, we already have it set up where uh, well, Stevens Point come in and give another financial aid night with all the updates and, and things like that. Um, and just various communications around student opportunities, things like that. Move on. Short term goals, um, so we've done this in the past, but we invited different like representatives from Portage County to come check out like what Rochelle does. Um, they can give us different tips and tricks on like what they like to see from their uh, their standpoint in, in students. Um, it was really beneficial, we had Martin Machining come here, we had um mid-state N T C. Um, we got to just kinda brag about Rochelle for a little bit. Um, but yeah, these are all of our short term goals, so hopefully we can do these next year. And if not, they'll be on the plan again for the following year. Long term goals, these are things that we have been doing. Um, so, yeah, like all parents will have the conversations with their students regarding A C P plan, sixth, ninth, eleventh grade. Um, those are three different activities through the Zello. Uh, local employers, post-secondary institutions, you know, workforce development, we'll participate in annual reviewing, advising district P I twenty-six plan. And carrying out A C P related activities. So again, that meeting that we had, they came and they kind of looked at some of this. We have CISA five, um, they come in, sometimes they bring some people to, to help us stay up to date and um really excel. So CISA five said that Rochelle's um, A C P team is actually pretty, pretty above sort of a lot of our schools and what we're doing here. So, and these are just our highlights to kind of show off the whole plan there. That was, that was a lot of uh, if you want to go on those, those links, it's actually in our website too. You can go and look at the E four E plan. Um, it just kinda lays out everything like those career pathways and stuff like that. But the highlights, yeah, the career fair. This year, we invited schools to that too. Um, they really enjoyed it and I think it's really cool that we can help out other schools that don't have those opportunities. Um, I think we had Tri County, no, Tri County did not come. We had Almond and um Bowler come. So uh, we had a bunch of people and employers were even more excited that they could not just reach Rochelle's students, but then other schools as well. Um, and a few of those people said that these are, that this career fair is uh better than ones that they go on to held by professional organizations that charge a hundred dollars to come in for that, you know? So I think Rochelle's doing some cool stuff, so that's all we got.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Again, this is an annual requirement, uh, annual presentation to the board, um, as part of the planning process. Uh, B P I requires a plan, so we present it to the board for official vote.
Okay, so do I have a motion to consider approval of like E four E plan as presented?
I'll motion.
Okay, Alyssa, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Chris. Okay, motion has been made and second to approve the E four E plan as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion is carried. Consider dental insurance renewal.
Uh, hopefully it's an easy one there, uh, came back with a zero percent increase again because our numbers are running good, our experience is good. So we just recommended uh renewing our dental, uh, Delta dental policy because we had a zero percent increase.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the dental, Delta dental insurance renewal as presented? James, okay, and is there a second?
I'll second.
Matt will second it to approve the dental, Delta dental insurance renewal as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? The motion is carried. Okay, discussion on Portage County Boys and Girls Club recognition. Mrs. Coyle.
I forgot it.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh goodness, it's in my office. We got a plaque.
Okay.
Um, so Boys and Girls Club of Portage County selected us as community partner of the year. Um, for the work that we did with them for the last two years with the Out of School Time Summer Grant. Which you guys um are well aware that provided transportation to summer school. It provided.
That's not it.
Oh, I'm like, that's not it.
Yeah, that's not.
Um, it provided uh funding for Boys and Girls Club um to have staff here during the summer. It provided forty hours, forty hours? For Mrs. Lewison for two summers in a row to work with students. Um, it provided the Boys and Girls Club storage shed that we now have on the playground. Ten thousand dollars in the books, we bought ten thousand dollars in the books. We bought a bunch of um art materials to use during summer school. So through that two year grant that we wrote with um Boys and Girls Club, they just really appreciated our continued partnership and dedication to Boys and Girls Club. So they selected Rochelle School District as community partner of the year. So I received a plaque on behalf of the school district. Um, I posted that on Facebook and then I didn't wanna hang the plaque anywhere until it had been presented to you. Because while I accepted it, it's our recognition, uh, mine.
And there's really, really no board action that's need to be, uh, need to be taken. But we definitely want to let the board know that uh, uh, we received that as the district, which is, which is pretty neat and all Portage County to be recognized.
And thank you to Rachel for running all the money on that because that was what, three hundred thousand dollars worth of grant money that she had to do the paperwork on.
Well, thank you, Rachel, for doing the paperwork. Mary, thank you for going and getting presenting Rochelle to receive the award. Okay, consider baseball pitch. Okay, consider baseball pitch count position.
So as we uh, talked about in the uh, public forum tonight, um, about unfunded mandates and, and laws that don't have money that comes along with it. WIA, the, 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 the WIAA did something very similar where now in baseball, they require an official pitch count because when I used to coach way back in the early two thousands, it was like you had, you, you could pitch up to seven innings like every three days, something like that. Um, well, now you can only do certain pitch, uh, a certain amount of pitches throughout that, the course of time. So arguably, um, this is not necessarily something that at the varsity level, we should have one of our kids in our dugout do. It's not something that uh, our coach is going to be able to do while they're coaching. And so really it, there's not a lot of support for spring sports because we don't have ticket takers. We don't supply um, scoreboard operators. We don't supply an official bookkeeper because both teams kind of keep their own book. But this is the one position with baseball that the WIA is required. And somebody brought it up and said, wait, why is this not one of our paid positions? Like we do the scorebook and score clock for basketball. This is an official position. It's an official record of the varsity baseball game. And so our recommendation is to add this one position to our list of event workers. Um, and it would, we're, we would, we would defend the position that it would be paid similar to like a varsity only um, scorebook operator or scoreboard operator for the, the basketball games. You know, so we had where it was, you know, forty-five and then sixty-five if it was a JV and varsity. Well, JV doesn't have the required pitch count, it's really just a varsity thing. Uh, well, I should say the varsity is where it's official. And so that's what we would do in this case. Now, if we had some, if we had a, and when we play baseball, very rarely do we have a JV and then a, a, a varsity game. It's usually always just the varsity. Now, if this were a weekend and we had double headers or two varsity games or round robin or whatever, then we would increase that, that pay to, to be, uh, to be consistent with, with the basketball position. So um, that was brought to our attention and, and it, it is a, it is an official position. So we're recommending that we add the baseball pitch count position to the official list of event workers.
Hey, excuse me, do I have a motion?
Just one quick question.
Yeah.
Would, would the pitch counter only count our team or do it count both teams?
Both teams.
Both teams.
Yep, it's the official count for both teams and it.
So then vice versa, you go to other school, that counter will count.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And I, I don't know how you do it, I don't know if you have two like those little metal click, click things or if they take, you know, tally marks. I, I don't know. I mean, what I do, I'm a hockey person, right? So when I'm in the penalty box, a lot of times we'll count shots on goal on our end. And I just have one of those little metal golf clicker things and you just add it up and, oh, it's the end of the period, huh? Thirteen saves, you know? That's what we do. So they could do that. And it's not necessarily our position to direct how they do it. We could give advice, but whoever wants to fill that position, however they want to keep official tally, they're free to do so. But yes, it would be for both teams. If it's a home game now, we go someplace else, they would provide their own official count.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
I'll make it.
Okay, Matt? Okay, the motion is, um, I need a second. I will do it. Okay, I make a motion as been made and seconded to approve the baseball pitch counter position as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion is carried. Oh, I should go back, Mary, can I second it? Am I legally okay to second it?
Yeah, it's not definitely of interest because it does not directly affect um, the AD's position.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah.
All right, thanks. All right, um, consider board service resolution.
Well, in, in honor of uh, James Dabrowski's service, uh, he has informed the board that he is not rerunning uh, for the school board. And that's unfortunate because um, for me, you were here when I first got hired and I've seen a lot of growth as a board member and I'm, I'm sad to see you uh, go. And who knows in the future, we're always welcome to rerun and hopefully uh, get back on the board. But as um, our recognition, um, it's, I'm, I'm asking the board to consider a board service resolution that reads, uh, Rochelle School District, a resolution honoring James Dabrowski. Whereas James Dabrowski served as a school board member for the Rochelle School District since April twenty-second of twenty-twenty-two. And whereas James Dabrowski has served the Rochelle School District with competency, loyalty and dedication. And whereas James Dabrowski selflessly devoted his knowledge, his time and his talents as an advocate for our schoolchildren and community's future. And whereas it is fitting and proper that this body, school board, for the residents of the school district, uh, of the Rochelle School District, as an incorporated voice of the people, recognize James Dabrowski's contributions to the school district. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the school board of the Rochelle School District to hereby go on record for themselves and for the citizens of the school district to recognize and announce their sincere appreciation to James Dabrowski for his years of dedicated service. Therefore, be it further resolved by the school board that this resolution become a part of the permanent records of the Rochelle School District and that the school district extend its thanks to James Dabrowski with wishes for his continued good health, happiness and success. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution will be presented to James Dabrowski. Signed, the school board and superintendent. Thank you.
Speech.
Thank you all.
Speech, speech.
It's been great to serve. I wish I could do a little bit more, maybe in the future. So.
Welcome me back. I do need a motion and a second to approve your service recognition. Okay, Alyssa, do I have a second? And Matt will second to approve the board service resolution presented to James Dabrowski. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion, motion carried. Okay, we will miss you, James. Okay, consider adjourned into closed session. Do I have a motion? Okay, Alyssa, is there a second?
I'll second.
Matt, a second to adjourn to closed session at?
Seven oh one.
Seven oh one. All those in favor?